Public hearing, October 20, 2014. The purpose of this public hearing is to present to the citizens the proposed formulated community needs and projects for consideration and input. It will be Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up to the public hearing that we had two weeks ago regarding our community development block grant application. Just as a reminder, this is a three-year application referring to the years 2015 through 2017. And we make application along with other local communities in Appleton County to the county for federal CDBG funds. And those applications are specific to projects that we identify through this process. We've taken the information that we had from the last public hearing and want to present a list of four projects. And these are prioritized in order, meaning that we designate our number-one priority and then followed by the next most important and the next most important and so on. So going in that order, the projects that we plan to present and make application for, number one, are repaving of Besseger Drive from McElvy Road to Brunswick Drive. This street is in need of full repair, which is full-depth pavement replacement and new curb and gutter, as well as drainage and catch basin work. We are planning to apply for $120,000 of CDBG funds for this project. And that is based upon a total project cost of $170,000, some of which will be paid by the Stormwater Utility for the curb and gutter and some of the drain work. The second project, number-two priority, is rehabilitation of the tennis courts at Central Park. These courts are not only used by the public but also by the sports teams at Witten Woods. The courts are in need of resurfacing and new support poles for the nets. We have issues with pooling water, cracks, and the very top surface delaminating. And so we've had to do fixes, minor fixes, over the years that run anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 at a time. This project's total cost is estimated to be about $120,000. The school district, however, has committed $35,000 to assist with that expense. And I'll just point out, it represents a good investment for the school district because the alternative for them would be to build their own courts. And in addition, due to the drainage improvements that are part of this project, we can also get money from the Stormwater Utility. So we are planning to apply for $60,000 of CDBG funds on that project. Number three is new or replacement playground equipment at Canter Park. Canter Park is in one of the areas that has, geographically, there are some areas, mostly near our apartments, that qualify with CDBG for low and moderate income benefit. Canter Park is located within, it's a census block group, in one of those census block groups. So that's the reason for selecting that playground equipment, along with the age of the playground equipment that is there. The cost estimate on that is, for the total project, $40,000. And we're planning to apply for $25,000 of CDBG funds on that. The fourth project is the rehabilitation of our plaza area and pedestrian mall outside of this building, meaning the area that's between the parking lot, the police station, and the municipal building. That surface has had cracks, which, again, have had to be repaired more than once. The surface is deteriorating. We have a cost estimate on that project of $45,000. And we are planning to apply for $25,000 of CDBG funds. So those are the four projects that will be included in our application. Also, part of that application is a resolution that is on your agenda for this evening, which names the projects and authorizes the city manager to make the application. This application is due to the county by November 3rd. Due to my schedule, we will probably be submitting it a little bit early. The target is next Monday. And we're well on track to have all that information together for the application. We should hear how we rank and what the recommended allocations are by mid-December. And then the county will hold a couple of public hearings of their own before finalizing that. The earliest projects can begin is next March. But that schedule fits with all of these. One last thing, just to note, is that it is a three-year process, as I mentioned. So some of these projects, if funded, may not be funded until 2016 or 2017. But we do feel that we can work with that schedule for any of these projects. That concludes my presentation of the projects and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for Mr. Anderson? Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Any questions from the public for Mr. Anderson? Hearing none. Chris, thanks for a good job, as usual. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Give us any idea of what the timelines would be like, look like?
Right. So the deadline for applications is November 3rd, and they'll take four to six weeks before we hear. And the Community Development Department at the county will present a list of projects for all communities. And then county commissioners will hold a couple of public hearings.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. There are no questions from council and/or the public. And this public hearing is declared closed. Call to order, City of Forest Park Council Meeting, number 1237, October 20, 2014. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
... United States of America.
... into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Burns.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
All the present, is there a motion?
Mr. Lives.
Yes, I'd like to move to excuse Clerk of Council Sally Huffman and appoint Joanne Hill Lee as the acting clerk of council this evening.
Second.
Been moved in second that we excuse Clerk of Council Sally Huffman and to appoint Joanne Lee as acting clerk of council for this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hoffman is excused. Ms. Lee is the acting clerk of council for the meeting. Item number two is minutes. You should have all received copies of the minutes, or are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none. We move to item number three, presentation. Mr. Lives has a motion.
I'd like to move to add as item B under the presentations, an award to Lieutenant Jermaine Hill for Fire Prevention Educator of the Year for the State of Ohio.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we amend the agenda to add an item B on the presentations, which would be a presentation to Lieutenant Hill for Fire Prevention Educator of the Year for State of Ohio. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The clerk call the roll on the motion to add to the amended agenda.
Burns.
Yes.
Cottle.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lives.
Yes.
South Hall.
Yes.
Motion passed that we will add an item B on the presentations for the award for Lieutenant Hill. At this time, we will do Presentation Business of the Month. Mr. Brim is not in attendance. He had asked that Councilwoman Herbie, who's the liaison for the economic development, to present the award. And this award Business of the Month to Cincinnati Testing Laboratories.
Our October Business of the Month is a key member of our business community and an anchor for our efforts to attract high-technology companies to Forest Park. Cincinnati Testing Laboratories, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Metcalf Research, opened a state-of-the-art laboratory and testing facility in our Caroline Business Park almost seven years ago. At the time, the company invested $4 million to build and equip a 43,000-square-foot facility on seven acres of land. That project brought 50 new jobs to Forest Park. In the years since, the company has continued to invest in and grow its Forest Park operation. They have created a number of new positions and expanded the services provided at its Caroline facility. Cincinnati Testing Laboratories is an internationally-recognized leader in the composite materials testing field. Their trusted team of engineers, technicians, and machinists supply material property data to industry and government agencies. They specialize in the machining, conditioning, and testing of composite metallic and advanced composite materials. In addition to conducting routine tests, CTL is the leader in developing specialized machining and testing procedures for one-of-a-kind, non-standard tests. In addition to this outstanding business record, the company has also proven to be an equally impressive corporate citizen, supporting a wide variety of community events and activities, including our annual concert on the Green. For all these reasons, it's our pleasure to recognize Cincinnati Testing Laboratories with this month's award. And accepting the award tonight is Dr. Philip E. Bretts, President and CEO for Metcalf CTL.
This award says, "The City of Forest Park Business of the Month, Cincinnati Testing Laboratories, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. We thank you for being our Business of the Month."
Thank you.
Well, you stole my speech. CTL has been a member of the Forest Park community for many years, first on Northland Boulevard, and then in 2008, we kind of renewed our vows with the community when we built our new facility in Caroline Boulevard. It's been our pleasure to be a member of the community for these many years. And as just a little teaser, we are now in discussions internally to decide how much we're going to expand our facility on Caroline Boulevard. So we will renew our vows yet again in the near future, and we look forward to continuing to participate in this wonderful community of which we're a member. And we very much thank you for this award. Needless to say, we'll share it with everyone back at the plant tomorrow, and we'll display it very proudly. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Hill?
Yes.
You want to congratulate him?
Congratulations on socks.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will go to item B on the agenda, and that item B is an award presented to Lieutenant Jermaine Hill for Fire Prevention Educator of the Year from the State of Ohio. Chief, would you come forward, please? Lieutenant Hill?
Thank you, councils. Thank you, Mayor. Just recap some things that Jermaine's accomplishments over the year. He also received an award back in August 25th. He was the Wittenwood School District Community Spirit Award recipient also. On September 17th, he received the Ohio, let me make sure I state it right, Ohio Prevention Public Educator of the Year. Back in 2012, when I took over the position as chief, I needed someone who was going to be more involved in the community, someone who would reduce the risk, be out with the children, be in the business community. And I looked at Jermaine for that. And as the years went by, he was the man that actually created, he had my dream, he had my vision, and he's taken it further than what I thought it would happen. I mean, he's done a great job. We're using him also for recruitment tools, educating first prevention for business, once again, and for the little ones in our community. But everyone knows Jermaine. To this day on, there's kids in the neighborhood that know Jermaine. When they're about 40 or 50 or 60, they'll remember Jermaine. They'll be the only person they'll remember from the community of Forest Park. And also, one of the things I wanted Jermaine is that I want people to move in Forest Park because of the fire department. And I think Jermaine is actually doing a great job at it. I mean, it's a great job. And I appreciate what you're doing, Jermaine. This is just the icing on the cake. There's going to be a lot more cherries will be placed on top of that. Because, I mean, you're a go-getter. If I was able to bottle your energy, I'll be a millionaire. I'll be able to form a Ferrari. But I can't bottle it. But, I mean, we appreciate it, and we love you for everything you do. Congratulations.
Appreciate you, chief.
All right, now.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Sam. Yes, yes, yes.
Of course, you got to talk.
Oh, okay. All right. Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's an honor, privilege, and a pleasure to be here before you. At church, hopefully, there's no separation of church and state here. But at church, they talk about having true joy. And this is one of the places that I receive joy. And I mentioned before that, you know, not too many chiefs would have been brave enough to do what Chief Jones did, and that's dedicate someone in a 40-hour position for public education for the health. And, you know, with me, it's about communication and collaboration. You know, our goal is to bring the community together, share resources, create productive individuals, and have fun, and educate. An educated community makes our job that much easier. And I look forward to coming to work every day. And, you know, sometimes I stress out, my wife, she can attest, because I want everything to be just right. And, you know, I want to make sure that we make that positive impact on the individuals that we touch and we reach and we connect with. There'll be more to come, bigger and better every year. That's the goal. So I want to thank you guys, and thank chief. And, you know, we work with so many people. Later on, we're going to talk about We Thrive, and we have community members here. We have Sergeant Ward from the Police Department. And we've actually collaborated with Cincinnati P.D. I have my best friend Eddie Hawkins here as well, my mom, my grandma, my mother-in-law, my father-in-law as well. So I just want to say thank you to you guys, thank you to the family. And with that, I'll back away. More to come, definitely more to come.
Okay. At this time, last four comments from council. Mr. Lives?
Thank you. I would like to thank you for all your service to the community. The residents all know you. They speak highly of you. And I get a report in the fire department, a monthly report, and half the report is the activities that you've done for the month. And I was prickly impressed that you did a CPR class for one person. Maybe that person will make a big difference someday if he saves some, or she saves a person. So it doesn't matter how many people he's addressing or what situation, but he's certainly a valuable member of the fire department and even a more valuable part of Forest Park. So don't move. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Cottle?
Jermaine, it's a privilege to work with you as the council contact for the committee We Thrive. And I know we're going to do great things for the community and health. I love your enthusiasm, your pink socks, your smile, and your concern for everybody. And I really appreciate the energy, your enthusiasm, and your professional commitment. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Herbie?
You know, I would echo what my colleagues have said. We really appreciate the work that you do for the city. And as Councilwoman Cottle said, it's the enthusiasm. I mean, anytime we see you, it's a hug and a smile and just that friendliness that really reaches out to the community. You're a real asset for our community, and we hope you're here for many, many, many years.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, a couple of years ago, I think Jermaine and I sat down at a Panera in Harper's Point. And we talked a little bit about the Presidential Health and Fitness Program. And as we talked about that, you could tell, you know, there was a passion and a ministry that's overriding this, you know, this man. And it's driving him to be a great example for probably one of the most fundamental and basic works that a city can provide. And that's really to ensure the health and well-being of its youth and its citizenry. And Jermaine, you are embodying that, you know, in everything that you do, from, you know, the fitness challenge with the kids to the festival this weekend. I mean, you know, when you look at the body of work and the breadth of it, they're not just children. Today's children are not the only ones that are going to remember you, but our elderly are going to know who you are because they have a relationship with you. Our children know who you are because they have a relationship with you. Our school district knows who you are because they have a relationship with you. And that's important because each one of those people are representative of every facet, every phase of life here in Forest Park. And I just thank you for the commitment that you have. And that award is just an example of what everybody sees, you know, it's confirmation of what everybody sees already. It's a small, you know, token that says you have a higher potential. And I would expect that, I mean, because I see it, you know. And I think, like the chief said, if I had an ounce of your energy, boy, the things that I could do. But it's your energy, so you do it. It's so important. Thank you for being who you are, and thank you for doing the things that you do.
Councilwoman Holt?
Jermaine, I want to say I admire your energy, your enthusiasm, that go-getter attitude that you have. I had the pleasure or opportunity to go through one of your training classes, which was great. And I thought it was awful big of you to step outside of your neighborhood. You came to our church, which is not in Forest Park, to start the class, and we finished it here, and you did it on a Saturday. I mean, we came early in the morning, which I'm not an early-morning person, but because you did the class, I made sure I got up so I could be at your class. I really admire you. I admire what you do, and I want to say thanks.
Mr. South Hall?
Yes, I just want to say, Jermaine, we certainly appreciate everything you've done and just continue your good work. And I don't know how much else can be said. So thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sure.
And I know this award has my name on it, but this is truly a team award. I tell the chiefs, it's all about getting this jersey dirty. It's about Forest Park. You know, I couldn't do this without a strong support unit behind me. Just like today, when we did line dancing at the firehouse, we had everybody working, all the firefighters were down, and they were setting up. And, I mean, they always come to my aid, you know, come to the rescue even, you know, whenever I need it. So it's all about the patch on the chest.
Jermaine is a special person, and special people come from special people. And I know that when you see Jermaine and what Jermaine is doing, you see Jermaine's family, and you see that behind Jermaine, these are the types of people that are there, his mom, his grandmom, and his wife, and even his kids. You know, it's almost like every time you turn around, there's Jermaine, whether it's at Gospel Fest, or whether it's doing CPR classes, or whether it's taking blood pressures over at the line dance, or having the line dance in the firebase today, or doing the fitness trainings at the schools. All of these things are out there, and people are seeing, and people are interested. You know, we're leading the way because we have that person who's leading the way. No job is too small. As Councilwoman Holt says, Jermaine does not operate on numbers, whether it's one person or whether there are 10 people or whether there's 100 people. You know, he's always there to lend a hand. And unfortunately, the only thing that I've been able to return to him in terms of help, a small thing, he did take my advice, and he bought a Honda. And that's probably the best decision he's ever made. I guaranteed him that it would last at least for 300,000 miles, and he said he's going to hold me to that. But Jermaine, we all appreciate you, and we appreciate your family for sharing you with us. And I would just say, you know, keep up the good work. And I look to being back here next year and the year after to see you get, not only repeating this award, but getting many more rewards and awards and bringing more glory to the City of Forest Park and the City of Forest Park's Fire Department. And again, thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Now, you might want to stay close, because I think you're going to be up there again in a minute. Okay. The next item on the agenda is communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions or concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. And at this time, I want to ask Lieutenant Hill to come back to the podium. Last week at the work session, there was a presentation on a program and a project that he's been working on, and I believe we're going to be passing on that tonight later on. And at that time, I asked that they return so that they could be the people, some of the other people involved in the We Thrive initiative could be introduced. So if you would, sir.
Do you want them to come to the podium as well?
You can just introduce them and have them to stand where they are, if you would.
Okay. All right. And this is just a partial list of the expertise that we have on our unit. But let's see, we have councilperson Cottle, Mama Sheila. We have Ms. Rosalynn Moore. She's a Forest Park resident and also a nurse. Ms. Betty Morgan, who's a nurse, well, retired, happily-retired nurse. She's also one of the chairs of the Waldrop Health and Youth Ministry. Let's see. Sandy Sanders, she's not here today, but she's Forest Park resident. Pat Backus, she's not with us today, but she's with TriHealth. She's a nurse as well. Katrina Weish. She's the Wellness and Prevention Service Manager with Yumadop. Okay? Very long title. Okay, let me make sure I say this correctly. Urban Minority Alcohol Drug Abuse Outreach Program. Yes. Let's see. Janet Steele, she wasn't able to come with us tonight, but she's a lay minister for Forest Chapel. Taffy Jackson, we all know Taffy. She's direct coordinator. Sergeant Ward, Jim. Let's see, we also have Ty Smith, Human Resources Director. And last but not least, we have Chief Alfie Jones. And me.
Could you, if there are people out there who are interested in getting involved, how do they?
Could you, if there are people out there who are interested in getting involved, how do they go about doing that? Whom should they contact?
I would be the point of contact, primary point of contact. Call the Fire Department, (513) 595-5291. And I just ask for me, and if you have an idea, if you want to be involved in the committee, always welcome to comments and suggestions, definitely.
Thank you very much, Jermaine. We appreciate all of you and what you're doing. And we look forward to this program and this project moving forward. And we thank you for your efforts and for all the assistance that you've given us and our community. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move to our reports. But before we do that, always after this section, we, you know, I'd like to say that you're more than welcome to stay. You don't have to. If you need to leave or want to leave, you can feel free to do so at this time. Thank you very much for coming, all of you.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we would move to item number five, reports of standing committee. The first of these standing committees is the Law Committee. Councilwoman Cottle?
I have no reports this evening. Thank you.
And any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing now, Councilwoman Cottle, I have no listed items for the agenda for the 27th for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, next committee report is Human Resources Committee. Councilwoman Holt?
I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing now, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items listed for you for the 27th. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilman Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I just wanted to highlight in the monthly reports from the Fire Department, they wanted to let everybody know that November 2nd is the famous fall back time for daylight saving. But more importantly, it's time to check the smoke and carbon dioxide alarms. They had an interesting statistic that 71% of the smoke alarms that failed in fatal fires were because they weren't operating properly or didn't have batteries. So for a simple thing as a battery, you can save your and your family's life. So that's the reminder for November 2nd. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lives? Hearing now, Mr. Lives, I have no items for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
Oh, no, no, thank you.
Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities. Mr. Southall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report for Public Improvement and Facilities tonight, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing now, Mr. Southall, I have no items listed for you. Do you have any to add?
No, not at this time, sir.
Thank you. Next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes. Well, having returned to council myself, I am back in Lea's on the road, and I attended a civil service meeting on October 8th and an Economic Development Commission on October 15th and Environmental on October 14th, at which time the director, Wright Gwynn, provided us with the results of some programs that had taken place over the summer and into the fall. Our large appliance program has changed a little bit. You have to call in order to set up an appointment for something to be picked up. But over the summer and during this period of time, we collected from probably over 40 homes, excuse me, we've collected over 40 large appliances, of which 19, I think, had Freon in them. And we collect them and contract with someone to come and drain the Freon and then cart those away. The Drug Takeback Program, which is a county program, occurs twice a year. In the September program, we collected 70 pounds of drugs, prescription drugs, from people to be recycled appropriately. We also have in the fall a used tire collection, which takes place over a weekend, and it's a one-person operation. Wright Gwynn goes out and kind of sits there and collects those. And many people from both Forest Park and Green Hills take advantage of that program. And we collected a number of tires for that. And then the reForest, Forest Park program, which we started last year. This year, we did distribute 100 trees to over 40 homes, and we already have 16 on the waiting list for next year. So check out the various programs for the Environmental Awareness Program on forestpark.org backslash environmental. That would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Councilwoman Herbie, for the meeting on this 27th, I have the 2013 audit results. The Council Mall and Associates, do you have any to add?
Yes, sir.
Next committee report is Community Development. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick note, or one quick thing of note. The home at 803 Exmoor Drive was recently sold and is under renovation. This was one of the homes that we purchased, or the city purchased as part of our redevelopment program. So this is an example where that opportunity did work from the standpoint of redevelopment or renovation. The home at 969 Harken was acquired, and the current plan is to demolish that home. That would conclude my report. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing now, Mr. Burns, I have one item on the agenda for you is the Wynton Corridor Economic Development Study that would be on the agenda for the work session on the 27th. Do you have any others that you would add?
No, thank you.
The next committee report is Internal Governmental and Communications Committee. That's my committee. I have no report under that committee, under the, on the agenda for the 27th. As I stated earlier, we will be discussing the winter recess. Move us to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just like to thank all of those people who made possible and participated in the annual Harvest Party. I don't know what exactly, Harvest Festival. I know that Mr. Hodges was there, Councilwoman Cottle was there, dressed in her costume as usual. And I don't know what it is, but all of the kids wanted to take pictures with her. And it was... It was, as usual, it was very well attended. The kids had a lot of fun. A lot of hard work goes into that. If, and again, it's one of those things that if you have not attended in the past, the next time it rolls around, you might want to get in on that. It's a lot of fun. It's always a lot of fun when you're watching children of that age group. There's so much energy that, you know, it's like somebody, you know, it's like the bunny. Somebody wound him up and they don't ever know when to stop. There was, and then we proceeded from there up to the fire station where the Fire Department had its annual program, its cookout, the burn off. It's really, again, it's amazing how interested the kids are in watching the firefighters at work. We had some recruits, and I think we had at least one fire intern from Cincinnati State. And what they do is they have a structure that they set a fire, and then the firefighters put it out, and through the process, an explanation is given as to what is happening and why one side of it, the living room side of it, has sprinklers and the kitchen side does not. And they explain and show the differences and how easily the fire is extinguished with almost just the sprinkling system in the living room side as opposed to the kitchen side where you have all of the, you know, the products, the chemicals, not the chemicals, but the grease and all those things that help to feed the fire. And of course, there was the chili cookoff that unfortunately I didn't participate in this year. I would have won for a third straight year had I done so. I will retire next year to reclaim my crown, I assure you. But it was very well done. One other thing I want to mention is because I see, and I guess it's one of those things, I don't know how we can publicize it anymore than we already do. I guess it's just a matter of people get into a habit. We're still finding people who are putting out brush for the chipper program. But the chipper program has ended. I think one thing that may have been, you know, the benefit of the doubt here, may have been a little confusing is shortly after the program ended this year, we had a storm. And a lot of leaves and branches and stuff blew down. And Ray and Dave, Dave Biskin, extended that for that particular purpose only. So for those of you out there who are still putting out your branches and debris, you need to take those back in or find some other way to dispose of them because we won't be starting doing chipper until next spring again. So if you've got it out there, if you're thinking about putting it out there, find some way to hold off on that until the spring next year. And the final thing that I would comment on, and Ray can correct me on this. We had a number of calls about a house, I believe, on Embassy that was vacant, and all of the contents of the house was placed outside. And it appeared that, you know, we don't know whether it was the people who were living there that did it or the bank. Needless to say, we, you know, it was out there for, frankly, it wasn't out there very long. I guess the calls started coming in that morning, and by noon or 1:00, it was all gone. And I guess Chris and Ray, Ray and our staff had made contact with the people who were responsible, and they, not the city, but they removed all that. I think part of the problem also may have been, once the stuff was put out there, you know, there's a tendency for pastors, by the people going by to, you know, to see something that they like and they would get it or they moved things around so that it looked a lot. It's probably one of the worst-looking situations that we've had, but it didn't last long, and thankfully, it got cleared up very, very quickly. So it was really, it was taken care of. And I want to thank Chris and Ray and all those people who were involved in taking care of that. Councilwoman Herbie?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted, your comments about the chipper program reminded me of something that people might want to know. This time of the year, people have a hard time understanding what to do with yard waste, particularly leaves. And I wanted to pass on to you a communication that went out from the Environmental Awareness Department to the people on its email list about yard waste. You can dispose of yard waste, but it has to be through the program that you're enrolled in. If you're enrolled in full service, it's not unlimited service. You are allowed 65-gallon trash cans or two 96-gallon trash cans or 10 large trash bags or a combination thereof. And you can dispose of yard waste through those receptacles that you have so that you can, you know, you can bag them up and put them out over a series of weeks if you want to do that. If you're on the Echo tier, you are controlled by what you enroll in. You can either get a 35-gallon receptacle or a 65-gallon receptacle. But you also, on the Echo tier, if people have been here long enough, know that in the past we were able to put little stickers on bags, and you could purchase those stickers at $1. You can get them here at the municipal building. You have the advantage in that program to exceed your trash receptacle size by putting out bags with those stickers so you can dispose of leaves in that way. But the stickers are only available on the Echo tier and not the full service. So that's one way to dispose of your yard waste. You can also, there's a yard waste collection program somewhere in the county. If you go online to our environmental website, you probably can find a link to that and dispose of yard waste outside of the city in that location.
Thank you. Just to add to that one comment, just for the benefit of those of you on council, you may get calls from residents who will say, "I put out my bags and Rocky didn't pick it up." And that may be an instance where they put out too much and it didn't get taken. So if you get those calls, I would refer those people to Wright so that he can explain to them the why of it. Because, you know, this is the time of leaf year when people are, leaves are falling, people are raking leaves. And they, you know, the assumption is, I'll just rake them all up and bag them all up and put them out there. Rocky should take them. But that's not always going to be the case, depending, again, on the program that you're in. That will conclude my report. I would ask any questions if there are any. Hearing now, we'll move to item number seven, the City Managers' Report. Mr. Hodges?
Thank you. There's two things I'll report. First, we are working with the mall to address a number of code compliance issues. As you know, the mall's been struggling, and we're concerned with some of the life safety type of compliance issues that they must address. And it may turn out that we may have to work with our law director in the event that they are just unable to meet those requirements. But there's no question, it is a place of assembly. We have certain fire and sprinkling type of code compliance issues. A number of issues that they must address, and their deadline is approaching. We don't know where they're at exactly, but we're a little concerned that they have not met the compliance standards yet, which normally calls for shutting down any facility that can't meet code compliance issues. One thing you might keep in mind, though, the stores that are basically there, the major stores, not the few small ones that are inside, they're basically on a different system. So it wouldn't affect them the same as it would the rest of the mall, whoever is in park or left in the rest of the mall. So just something to keep in mind. We'll hopefully get it all addressed by the end of the month, but nevertheless, the end of the month is approaching. Finally, I would report that the departmental reports have all been completed. They have been included in the council packet, and they are available for public inspection with the clerk of council. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the City Manager? Yes, ma'am.
Ray, are you saying that the stores or the businesses that inside the mall, there could be a jeopardy if this is taken care of?
Correct. Because if you close the mall, then whoever's in the mall, you can't have access to it. That's something that we certainly would not want to do. We want to try to avoid that on the one hand. But it's the same as any other facility where you're, in essence, inviting the public in and you don't have the proper safety standards in there. Something happens in there, then you got a problem because people shouldn't be in there under those conditions. So again, we're going to continue to do everything we can to get the mall to fall into compliance. And I have to say, this is the first time we've had issues with the mall. We've had issues year after year after year. And typically, they have at the last minute or so done something to stay within a realm of compliance and maybe extend their time or so. But as time goes on and as we see it here, it's significant enough to say, well, we just need to be aware because, you know, I'm sure their revenue stream is not as strong as what it used to be. And nevertheless, their issues that they have to address, it's going to cost quite a bit because time has gone by that they have failed to address. So to answer your question, yes, anyone with, inside the mall, would not have access because, you know, somehow we have to shut the facility. And that's the reason why I said, well, we may have to work with the law director on exactly how you do that with the mall. So it's not to say that is going to occur, but from, you know, from the city's perspective, you have limited choices. Otherwise, you're allowing the public to go into a facility that you know is not safe to be in under those kind of circumstances. So our whole bottom line is, we hope and we're encouraging the mall to address the problems in a timely manner and, you know, life will go on without interruption.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Hearing now, we move to item number eight of the reports. The first of those would be the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if Mr. Hodges has received this yet. It might have just gone out today. But a recent court appeals decision came out affirming a first district court appeals decision of several years ago. That is our district that governs us. And it's really a critical... And it, it's really, um, a critical decision when you have a board or commissioner or council, uh, who might use email to communicate with each other. The issue that was raised was whether, um, the communication amongst the majority of the boards or commissions constituted a meeting as defined in the Sunshine, uh, which would require public notice and all the other public requirements, the ability to attend, et cetera. Both courts have held that Ohio revised code in defining meetings never included electronic communication. And therefore, just by the lack of definition, we have to assume the legislature did what they intended to do, which means not include. But they did point out, if it's a prearranged situation, uh, amongst a majority of council members, it could be construed as a public meeting. Uh, but aside from that, communications, uh, through emails are permitted, not considered a public meeting. That's to be distinguished from a public record. It would still be a public record, but you wouldn't have to go through the public meeting requirements if you're just emailing back and forth, even if it's, say, three of you as an example, as long as it's not a prearranged meeting through electronic sources. Um, the other distinction they made was that the conversations that occurred in these two cases dealt with non-public issues. They were political issues. Uh, they dealt with, and Columbus, the Columbus Dispatch had reported, um, that they thought it was improper for the school board to turn over its authority to a committee when the school board, that's why we have a school board. So, the communication was, "How do we respond to this, uh, Columbus Dispatch editorial? And we're going to have the chairman of the board, um, make that communication that here's what we want him to say." Well, with that type of conversation, the, it was not considered a public issue. And that would be as an example, it's distinguished by, if you're going to hire a new police chief and you're communicating about the police chief, obviously that is a public issue. Uh, and it's a violation if you then would make a decision, um, hence, we have to use executive sessions if you want a private conversation on public business like hiring a police chief. So, it's, it's, you know, just clarifies the important thing is you can communicate with each other electronically and not be considered a meeting, but it will be a public record.
Right.
That's the end of my report. Once you get the, uh, summary of the decision, if you have any other questions, let me know.
Any questions for the Law Director? Thank you, sir. The next report would be Clerk of Council, Miss Lee.
Um, yes, I'd like to report for Sally Huffman that Resolutions Numbers Thirty-two, two thousand fourteen, and Thirty-three, two thousand fourteen were posted as required in the report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing now, thank you, Miss Lee. Next, we'll move to item number nine, New Businesses, their motion, Mr. Lives.
Yes, sir. I would like to move to suspend the rules, uh, in regard to Resolutions Thirty-four through Thirty-six and read these by title only since they were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we suspend the rules requiring reading, uh, for on two separate days and read by title only, Resolutions Thirty-four, Thirty-five, and Thirty-six, twenty fourteen. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, would the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to suspend the rules.
Uh, first item under New Businesses, A, Resolution Number Thirty-four dash twenty fourteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Thirty-four, two thousand fourteen. A resolution to concur with the City Manager's purchase of real property located at nine seventy Harkin Drive.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of Resolution Number Thirty-four dash two thousand fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Thirty-four dash twenty fourteen. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yeah, as part of our community redevelopment program to remove condemned properties, we've put ourselves in a position to acquire at a very nominal price, a house at nine seventy Harkin Drive. Uh, because time is of the essence, uh, to be able to complete these acquisitions, uh, we've worked with the bank holding the title to, um, the property and have executed a purchase contract with them. This is a vacant house that's in disrepair and fits our demolition project requirements. We're prepared to proceed with the purchase. Owning the property makes it easier to proceed with the demolition. City Council already provided authorization to the City Manager for such acquisitions and we have, and actually, we have in fact already signed a purchase agreement under the authorization. This resolution's intended to, um, heighten public awareness that such a purchase has been made and to allow council the opportunity to concur that the purchase has been made and is consistent with the redevelopment goals of the city. This is one of two properties on Harkin Avenue in a cul-de-sac and the re- and we've already, um, acquired, uh, a, a, a location across the street that's also either slated for demolition or has been demolished. And the removal of these two properties will, um, very much improve the, uh, the, uh, properties on Harkin, so I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion on Resolution Thirty-four, twenty fourteen? Hearing now, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution Thirty-four, twenty fourteen?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-four, twenty fourteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, Item B, Resolution Thirty-five, twenty fourteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Thirty-five, twenty fourteen. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an application for community development block grant funds for program years twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty seventeen.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, I move for the adoption of Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty fourteen. Is there any discussion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, this resolution is a culmination of two, um, public hearings where staff was actually presenting the plan for, um, the block redevelopment grant or block development grant, uh, and collecting input from the citizens. Uh, as typical, these grants, there's typically more opportunities than there are funds. Uh, therefore, the city has, um, recommended three unique, um, or four, I should say, unique projects to be supported by the, um, submission. The, uh, street rehabilitation for Besseger between Be- on Besseger Drive between McKelvey and Brunswick. The, um, municipal tennis courts on, in Central Park, replacement of playground equipment at Canter Park, and resurfacing the municipal plaza, uh, pedestrian walkway. And with that, uh, also is implied, these grants are provided for, uh, low to moderate income and disadvantaged concentrations of pop- of population within the county. Uh, these projects have been, um, prioritized and allocated to, to qualify for those grant fundings. And with that, I would urge adoption for Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty fourteen.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing now, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution Thirty-five, twenty fourteen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-five, twenty fourteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, Item C, Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Thirty-six, twenty fourteen. A resolution authorizing the City Manager or his designee to implement the We Thrive initiative in the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Cottle?
Yes, I move for adoption of Resolution Number Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Cottle?
Yes, uh, this is an initiative, We Thrive, that will allow us to get the community to adopt a program to become healthier. Uh, there is a committee with We Thrive, um, and many were introduced this evening earlier. Uh, and, um, Jermaine Hill from the Fire Department is our main contact for the We Thrive Collaborative, and it allows for community health pathways. Um, it's, reflects ideology more fitting of our community, the positive steps needed to accomplish future goals, and flexibility recognizing that the need of the community may shift. And through the community health pathway, an epidemiologist will examine statistics to determine the true needs of our community. And with this information and feedback from the community members, we will develop programs to meet this challenge. And I would urge adoption of Resolution Number Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen.
Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing now, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty fourteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, Item D, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I move to accept the general fund summary reports as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Item E, Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution in full?
Um, Resolution Number Thir- Thirty-seven, twenty fourteen. A resolution expressing support for the Windwood City School District bond issue. Um, whereas the Si- Windwood City School District serves the children's educational needs of the city of Forest Park, Village of Green Hills, and portions of Springfield Township Anne, whereas the Windwood City School District cooperates with business and industry to provide training and skills which have been identified as necessary for the continued economic growth and progress of the area Anne, whereas an independent state assessment of Windwood City School District's current classroom facilities issued a grade of D or F in two thousand three Anne, whereas the Windwood City School District is seeking a bond issue of eight point forty-eight mils Anne, whereas the Windwood School District bond issue will generate seventy-six point six million dollars when continued, when thirty-three million from the state of Ohio for the construction of new classroom facilities in the amount of one hundred and nine point six million serving all children of the Windwood City School District and the communities aforementioned. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Forest Park does hereby endorse the bond issue for the construction of new classroom facilities in the Windwood School District. Section two, that all citizens of the City of Forest Park are encouraged to vote for the bond issue on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty fourteen. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, I move for the passage of Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen.
I have a correction first. On the pa- on the paragraph says, where it says, "Whereas the Windwood City School District bond issue will generate seventy-six point six million when," and the word, uh, omit it was combined, it should be combined with the thirty-three million.
Okay, we will take that as a correction. And, uh, Mr. Barnes, your motion then would con- would include the correction, correct?
No, it's correct on here.
Oh, okay.
It's just what was said. I didn't want it to go out.
I got you. Okay, so, Mr. Barnes, would you restate your motion, please?
I move for the adoption of Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen. Is there a discussion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this resolution is, um, one of the traditional resolutions that, uh, council has been asked to, uh, pass during this time, um, when the school board is reaching out to, to the community. It, it's really, um, formulated to inform the community of the pending opportunity for the, uh, bond issue and, and, and its efforts to improve the infrastructure of the school district and its presentation of education or delivery of education to our students. Um, with that, I would urge adoption of Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Uh, I would just echo Mr. Barnes's statements that this resolution, that this, this is something that we have traditionally done when there is a, uh, school levied or bond issue. Uh, if there are no further discussion, would the clerk call the roll on the, uh, resolution?
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
The Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty fourteen passes seven zero. Uh, is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none? We are adjourned.